Under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda is a roll call. Madam Clerk, or Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Yeah. Mr. Taylor?
By surprise there.
Mr. Zwicker? Ms. Brier?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor?
I ask Mr. Prince?
A move to excuse the absent council member?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Brier, that we excuse the absent council member. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those no? Absent council member is excused. Okay, next up, we have a very special presentation from our King County Councilmember, Reagan Dunn. Reagan, thank you so much for coming. I know you've been working hard for us.
Thank you, Councilmember Corbin, and fellow councilmembers. Great to be here, and thanks for having me. I wanted to shift gears. I usually come January, February timeframe, and it doesn't make a lot of sense after the budget is done. I wanted to hit my cities now while we're in the middle of budget deliberations going on and give you a report, and then hear any feedback you have on things that are important to Renton. It's, of course, my privilege to represent about half of the city of Renton, along with the nearly quarter of a million total constituents I represent in southeast King County. So let me talk a little bit about the budget. It's in full swing. We've had three public meetings already. We will have our final public meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 at the council chambers. We are working now from an annual to a biannual budget, so it's changing the numbers a little bit. It's about a $9 billion budget. That includes about $714 million to the general fund. As you know, we are funding King County government, which is about 12,000 employees. Roughly 74 percent of that general fund is dedicated to public safety services, police, prosecutor, courts, public defense. And so, we continue, like many small municipal governments, in the amount of money we're putting into our law enforcement services. I wanted to tell you that we still have a problem in terms of our spending and our revenues right now. We're recovering from that economic downturn, facing an estimated deficit to the general fund in 2015 and 2016 of some $36 million. So, instead of making these $95 million year cuts like we did, we're steadying, but there's still somewhat of a decline. It's estimated that sales tax revenue are not projected to return to 2007 levels until 2015, and property tax valuations would not return to 2009 levels until as far out as 2018. So we'll have those challenges in terms of revenue coming in, and we'll be fighting those challenges. Let me talk a bit about transit. There's a shortfall predicted in the transit budget of about 17 percent across-the-board reduction in service. That's very real. As Councilmember Palmer knows, we worked hard over the last several years in the Regional Transit Committee to squeeze $140 million each year out of the operating budget. But the legislature's funding mechanism sunsets here next spring, and so that 17 percent is very real. It could, if we don't figure the problem out, have that kind of impact, of course, Renton being a highly transit-dependent community as well. So I've been down to Olympia a lot lobbying for local options that will help us preserve not only funding for transit system, but also for our road system in unincorporated King County just outside of Renton, of course, up on the east plateau. And again, I want to thank Councilmember Palmer for her hard work. She represents you all, as you know, on the Regional Transit Committee. Does a nice job there. She's been a real strong voice for the city of Renton. Couple service changes that have taken effect in Renton that I want to bring to your attention. The Route 140 has been extended to the landing in anticipation of the Rapid Ride F-line being implemented in June of 2014. Obviously, I know, past dialogues with you, how important that is to the city. And I will continue to monitor this. I wish it could have happened a little more quickly. In June 2014, Rapid Line F replaces the Route 140, and then construction, as you know, has begun on the F-line facilities such as new stops and stations, fiber optics, real-time information signs, and transit signal priority improvements. So it's coming. The Route 909 alignment has been modified to better provide better access to Renton Technical College, and Route 155 has been converted to a DART service between Fairwood Center and South Center. So those are some of the changes you're aware of. We will continue to publicize those as they come up in other changes. Something that I think I want to flag for you, as many of you know I serve as chairman of the King County Flood Control District. That is a separate unit of government from King County, and we've put nearly a quarter of a billion dollars in infrastructure improvements throughout King County, much of it here in the Cedar River and Green River watersheds, where the largest industrial and manufacturing and residential communities are. This being, this whole valley being the second-largest industrial center on the west coast of the United States. So, we've done a lot of good work there. We're completing a whole lot of different construction projects on the levee systems across this area, a few that I wanted to mention in Renton. The Black River Pump Station, which protects much of the south and southwest of the Renton Business District, continues to be upgraded by 2019. The total investment in that facility alone will be $6.8 million. We're also continuing Cedar River gravel removal, which allows for more flood storage in the river channel, reduces flooding pressure on much of the Boeing facility there as well. And this will be funded by up to $5.9 million over the same time period. Last, the Flood Control District is providing funding for the city of $127,000 this year to allow recertification of the Lower Cedar River levee, a core engineer section 205 flood hazard reduction project. We're also monitoring things like the placement of large woody debris, and I'm well aware of the fact that it came down the river and ran into your bridge. I got a call from Mayor Law. He wasn't happy, but we worked together. We got that taken care of.
Thank you.
We are actually auditing that program to see if it does what it's supposed to do.
Good.
Anyway, thanks for the chance to come here. I thought maybe if there was any questions or concerns related to the budget or other things that you would like me to do as your councilmember, I'd be happy to hear them.
Well, thanks, Councilmember Dunn. Any comments from the council, questions?
More money.
Yeah, I just want to personally thank you for all the work you've done. And the topics you've hit on, some of them are very dear to us. The F-line, really looking forward to that. Really grateful that's continuing even in spite of the reductions. And just as you said, you know, getting our bridges protected is really important, so thank you for that.
Public can give a question?
Sorry, you're out of order, sorry. Any other comments, or... okay.
Well, thanks. Thanks for the chance to speak, and we'll continue to work very hard to make sure that we have our transit and road funding options.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, next up is the administrative report. Mr. Covington, do we have a report?
Mr. Mayor, no report tonight. Other than to tell you that the weather was beautiful in Hawaii, and it is gray and dark here in the northwest.
So glad you both said that.
Yeah, thanks for filling us in. That makes us feel better about your trip.
At his own expense.
At his own expense. That's an important point. Okay, so next up is audience comment. I have four speakers that have signed up tonight. And when you come up to the podium, please state your name and city of residence for the record, spelling your name, please. And remember, you've got five minutes, and we intend to hold it to five minutes tonight. So first is Sam Bellamino.
I'd like to speak after the residence. Is that mine, or should I come now?
You can wait.
Okay.
Okay, next is Alex Zimmerman.
Yeah, we want to speak after the local residence.
Okay.
Priority here.
Okay, that's fine. Okay.
For pleasure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so next up is Howard McCumber.
Hi, Howard McCumber, City of Renton. We had a beautiful meeting before this, where Maggie was... we're getting a small... Watch it, get choked up. A swell, a touch of Lady Tuss. But we have a lot of things going on in the city right now, which are pretty exciting. Just a couple I'd like to mention. There's going to be a fun 5K run this coming Saturday between 9:00 and 12:00 at the... Where does Hazen do their play? The ballfield where Hazen High School does. It's the municipal...
The stadium? Is it the Renton Stadium?
Yeah, the stadium.
Renton Municipal Stadium.
I know where it is. I can see it, but suddenly it's...
Yeah, Renton Stadium, yeah.
Oh, anyway. That's to support Luther's Table, and it'll also be supporting the Center of Hope downstairs. So that's an important thing. We have a lot of things coming up. The coalition, and the cooperation, and the partnership is what's going to get us over the hump. And maybe it isn't so awful bad. There's a silver lining between the terrible economic crisis we've gone through, because we've learned that we have to work together, and we have to cooperate, and if we do it, we will win. And the thing that's so important are the people. And I know all of you are volunteers, so we just work with helping the people. The thing you'll hear from you a bunch is going to be about affordable housing. I think that's so important. And it's working out ways that we can, that everyone can win, where we can have everything handled. And it's going to take some creative thinking and some flexibility, but it could be done. Another thing is, we do have, I'll blow my horn for reach, we have some organizations that are coming up where people, if they want to volunteer, can volunteer. I'll be pushing Boy Scouts. I think scouting's wonderful. I work with some troops, and any boy can join, and they don't have to pay any money, because the church I work with pays a registration fee. And it's something wonderful, because kids have to have something very positive that they can do. And this is something that I think is totally positive. We are celebrating our 100th year of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints working with Boy Scouts a week from tomorrow. And we'll be having some very special things. And we'll be passing out the word. I think there'll be something in the Renton Reporter on it. These are things that, the positive things that we have going on are important. And as we continue to work on the positives and work on cooperation, and work on partnering, and work with creative thoughts, we're going to win. We have a definite problem with affordable housing, which is causing us difficulties everywhere down the line. And so it's going to take some creative thought and some, and things to work it. But we will work it, and we'll find people who can help. And all together, we'll solve the problems that we have. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Howard. Okay. Next, we'll go to Andrew Harmon.
Hello, actually, I brought some packets for the council member.
Yeah, can you hand them to the clerk?
Hi, so my name is Andrew Harmon, H-A-R-M-A-N. And I live in the city of Seattle, but I actually represent people with developmental disabilities that live here in Renton. And I have spent the last year working with the municipality of Seattle with the initiative that they passed. That very first page on the packet is a little bit about the initiative that the city council passed last year that created 50 additional supported employment positions for folks with disabilities. We have now created 15 of those 50 positions in the last year. And I wanted to approach the council here in Renton to see whether you all had an interest in sort of using that model for the city of Renton to create one or two part-time positions for folks with developmental disabilities. What supported employment is, is we go out and we create jobs for people in the community. We customize them based on what their interest and skill level is. And then we come alongside them as their job coach. So I work with four Seattle city employees as their job coach, going to work with them, helping them with their daily tasks. Each one is a little bit different, because they all have different needs. But kind of being the liaison between the managers and the supervisors and the employee as well. So I'm very aware that this body is not, you know, a hiring body. But using the model that they had in Seattle, the city council was the one that kind of stepped up to the plate first and said, "This is something we'd really like to try with the city of Seattle." And so by passing the initiative, what they did was they freed up some monies inside departments to be able to be a little bit more flexible with how they use some of the money that they were allotted. And they were able to create these positions and support them in this way. So I would really encourage the city council to look over what Seattle has done and see whether it's something that the city of Renton might benefit from. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair? I was just going to encourage him to reach out to our human resources person, because I know that they are actively working on something similar within their department. So, do you know about it, Jay?
Yes, actually, the council will receive a presentation next Monday on supportive employment. So we'll make sure they have...
Good timing.
...Harmon's information and provide that for you.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you guys very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, Ms. Brier, for the comment. Thank you. Okay, next, we'll go back to Sam Bellamino.
Yep, all right. So, you know, I... Is the, can I see my timer, or how's that work? It's counting down right now. Could you, can I see the timer? Thanks. Just because I don't know what the yellow and...
Oh, yes, thank you very much. Maybe you can show us faces, too.
So I'm speaking today to clarify what happened last time, because it did snowball into a crazy realm. That never has happened before. You know, I was questioned pretty badly by you guys, and of course, I got defensive, and it went pretty far out. So let me back up. First off, why did I bring up the television? Because you guys do have control over it. This is your council, and you guys are supposed to be giving rules on how things are operating. And Reagan Dunn was just standing up here, and he never had the camera pulled off once. Is it because he's an elected official? I don't get, you know, when I watch C-SPAN, the speaker always has the camera on them. When I watch Seattle TV, King County TV, Bellevue TV, the speaker always has the camera on them. So I don't know if this is supposed to be a propaganda machine, so that way your faces are always showing, so that, because it's name recognition and face recognition at city level, you know. It's not really the idea. Anyway, so it helps you in reelection. I'm not sure why you're doing it. I was questioning that. And you guys do have power, just so that the speaker is respected and is shown on TV. But, you know, you guys will think it's because I want to be on TV, which is far from the truth. The second thing is Reagan Dunn was here, and you did have a chance to bring up the issue why citizens aren't allowed into the decision-making process at the county level. You guys had the chance just now, so now I know you aren't going to do it. You're not going to send a letter. You're not going to work on behalf of the citizens. I view the government from the bottom up, not the top down. So citizens need more time into their government spaces. They rely on their neighborhoods to advocate for them at the city level, the city to advocate at the county level, the county to advocate for you at the state, and the state to advocate at the federal, right? Isn't that how it's supposed to be? But now we have rules written for us at the federal level that the states have to follow. They make the county implement, and the cities just blindly follow. We don't have control of citizens over the process of how our country operates right now. You guys are allowing it to continue by standing here with Reagan Dunn asked you, "Is there anything else besides the budget that I could take care of?" He asked you those words, and you didn't even bring it up. So it's not a concern for you. It's not important that the citizens are allowed into the idea creation phase. And you do represent 100,000 people. You represent more than yourself and the special interests that get you into office. So that's the concern I have, is I'm coming and speaking to you about something honest, and I'm sincere about this, and that we need somebody to do something, but none of you will do it. And when I use the word aristocrat or elite, it's, you can take it as an insult if you like, but the elite of each area own the corporations, the businesses, the media, and the government. It's truth. We have 95 percent disapproval of Congress. Only 5 percent of people approve of Congress. Seattle, actually, just had a poll. 28 percent approve of Seattle council. But yet, we keep re-electing the same people in the process, because the process and system is owned by the people in here. The rules are written by the politicians, so of course, the rules work for you. So I'm actually standing up to you at your level and not being beneath you, and asking you eye-to-eye, man to woman, man to man, that you stand up with me and ask for citizens to be allowed into the decision-making process of the county. Why are you silent? The problem is, is you can't shake the vote because you're elected, and you shaking the vote will get you unelected. We don't need people in for five, six terms. Two terms and done. But instead, we have kings in power. There's many other countries. When Alex uses the word communism fascism, he's talking about the power of control that these systems have. These people, it's an iron cycle. They get re-elected and elect their buddies in. They control the media. They control the business. So we have that in America, because... And you're a perfect example, because you're allowing for the five minutes, and you speak about... I'm going to show you. I did some research. You guys are talking about how we're stealing some time from citizens, but for the last six months, week by week...
Sure.
Yeah, April 1st, one person. April 8th, one person. The 15th, one. April 29th, four people. Two, four, one, two, one, one. 24th of June, zero people spoke. Two, one, one, two, two, one.
You're a democrat.
These are the people that are coming to speak. You hold a half hour in your agenda for people to speak. That's for six people. Six people. So if only two people are speaking, we're not stealing any time. You've already budgeted the time into your agenda for this. So really, what you're trying to say is we're limiting freedom of speech, but only by 25 percent, because these people are calling us bad, and we're good people. We're very good people. So don't let these people say they're bad. And we'll make rules to stop people coming into our town and calling us bad. At one point, you're going to wake up and realize you are bad, because you're silent, because you're allowing the process to continue. If you want, I can give this to you. Actually, I will give this to you. Just because I want, why correct freedom of speech when you guys only have up to four people speaking? Your time, your budget is for six. So quit attacking us and work with us. I'm begging you at this point. I come in before thanking you for giving me five minutes to speak. And I thank you again for offering it out of branch, and work with me. Just work with me.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bellamino.
My name, Alex Zimmerman. And I represent Stand Up America. He's a nice man, and I like him. He's American. He don't know what it mean communist or don't know what it mean Nazi fascism. You know what it mean? I know.
Excuse me, can you state what city you're from? Can you state your city of residence?
Your city of residence.
I represent Stand Up America.
No, where from? What city are you from?
Mean where I live?
Yes.
I live in Bellevue for 25 years.
Thank you.
You're here for Stand Up America, which is Seattle.
But I not represent myself. You need understand different. Like you represent yourself, you represent city. I represent Stand Up America.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm so sorry, guys. You don't want what is I use my name? Alex Zimmerman, I can use only Stand Up America is my name. You'll be happy with this. I'm happy to. Guys, what is we have right now is very similar what is we have before in history, and nothing changed. We come to you for one particular reason. Like we come right now to many city. And talking very simple point. We have a King Country consul who corrupt to the bones, so acting like organized criminal, like a mafia, have all definition of communist or fascism. Example Nazi socialism. You know what it mean in Germany. This is exactly what has happened. Number one, there's people staying in line for 20-plus year. It's absolutely analogy to communist Soviet Union Chinese, or like did Hitler, Mussolini, or Franco. Pure fascism. Classic. It's exactly who you are. We come to you because people from you, like for example, Marcy Palmer, staying in this business for long time. She representing, she's in office of King Country chamber. And never I see from her, so she told, "Oh, please, these people give speak like we doing this in Renton." You know what it mean five minute? Give us two minute. Never two minute, huh? We come to you because we want what is you stand up. Stand up not for us. You stand up for 100 million people. For pardon, for 100,000 people. It's important for you. It's your citizen. You supposed to be represent this citizen. You supposed to be talk to King Country consul, not behalf of Stand Up America, or me, for example, or Sam. You supposed to be stand up and talk about 100,000 people who you represent. Why this citizen of United States of America, of state of Washington, of King Country in city of Renton cannot speak in King Country? It's a consul come today. What is his name?
Reagan Dunn.
Reagan Dunn. Talk about budget. Four hearing, nobody come. Eight billion dollars, never touch. You understand? Four year, Don Constantine never have one Q and A. He operate with $32 billion us money, my money. It's like a broker. You know what it mean when my broker? Pardon, don't talk to me. What is I doing? Exactly. You know what is you doing with this broker? Yes. Yes. So he's a broker for me. He operate with eight billion dollars per year, never give me chance ask what has happened with my money. Guys, are you understand or you totally crazy? Pardon, I cannot use word idiot because it's not polite word, yeah, for my understanding. Are you understand? As people operate with my and your money too. So why we don't ask these people, give, give us chance, speak in every council meeting like a post to be, like all city have. Renton different from Bellevue or another city, you know what it means? Renton, you are different. You Randy Korman, for example, staying on this chair for 20 years. Can you explain me what is you doing this for 20 years? It's our or mine, if you go for another election, never have a competition. Look, it's no people here, hundred thousand people in Renton who come to this, one people per month, per week. Guys, how do you understand? People not believe you more, you not represent more people. You represent a mafia organized criminal who control everything. It's nothing new on there, son. It's happened before, it's happened right now. So for last generation, for another 20 or 25 year, we bring America totally collapse. America, who first country in the world 200 year ago, show to everybody what it means freedom. What it means real freedom. What it means read freedom of speech. Make a republic 200 year ago, what is don't have analogy before in new human history, maybe 5,000 year ago from Greek. So situation right now very simple. We ask you, ask King Country consul, send a letter, ask very simple. Can city of Renton, people from city of Renton, come to every day, every day consul, King Country consul have a meeting, committee meeting, speak like everybody doing, two minute, okay? Open door, stopping this crook because when this crook and you crook and everybody crook, we have what is we have right now, collapse and nothing change. And another point what is very critical, you have one woman in two black in your consul. It's very important from Bellevue, for example, or from another people that only white, you understand about talking? And black have problem for last 200 year, what is I know. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zimmerman. Okay, was there anyone else from the audience that would like to?
Mr. White.
Uh, miss, yes. I'm sorry, um.
I also think I was waiting.
Yes, I think I, we got the sign up sheet before. Audrey, uh, go ahead, please.
I could wait until she get that.
Okay.
Um, my name's Audrey Adams and a very proud member, uh, resident of Renton and, and, uh, Mr. Korman, I'm really happy that you've represented us for 20 years.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
I would not be, uh, we wouldn't be as privileged had it been less than that. Um, anyway, um, uh, I've been a little ill lately, so you haven't seen me much, but um, I just haven't been well enough to come today and hear this wonderful gentleman from Pro Vale, uh, Mr. Herman, um, speak about supportive employment. Um, what a delightful topic for me considering, um, you all know that I have a 28-year-old with autism and he's not just a little kinda autistic sorta guy. He's the classic, real deal autism sort of guy and, and, um, and when he attended Benson, he was the most disabled student and at Benson Hill Elementary. When he attended Nelson, he was definitely the most disabled student at Nelson. When he attended Lindbergh, he was absolutely the most disabled student at Lindbergh. But today, um, he's been, uh, working at Highline Community College, uh, archiving documents. So he scans, he has big piece of equipment, he scans documents, um, and he is darn good at it. He's fast, he's efficient, he's accurate, and they love him.
Right.
They absolutely love him. He works four days a week.
Nice.
Four hours a day. And I just have to tell you that I would love to be able to be part of a project that looked at supportive employment, um, just because I have a lot of experience, um, been kind of a leader in my, um, community, uh, school community, uh, in the special education realm for a long time. So I would, I would just love to see this happen here in Renton, very, very excited. And I would, um, love to have you talk also to, um, you know, people at Highland Community College to show, you know, what kinds of things can be done to make this very successful and to make it good, not just for the disabled person, um, but also for the employer, hopefully, city of Renton. So.
I was gonna say, I appreciate the feedback and Mr. Covington, did you say that's coming back to this, to the Committee of the Hall or?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, it's on Committee of the Hall next week. Okay, good. Well, I hope you'll join us next week in Committee of the Hall, uh, see the meeting.
Mr. Mayor? Uh, this has just come up with me, a neighbor, um, who is, uh, she's a grandma of a disabled young woman. And she had asked me if the city was doing this and I didn't know. I said, we're gonna learn together. And Nancy Carlson, who is the HR administrator, said they were, the city had, was just beginning to work with Highline Community College. So, um, I'm really looking forward to the presentation next week and it's interesting you said Highline because it sounds like that's, that's what they're doing.
Yes, they were his, um, employment vendor.
Mm-hmm.
And they liked him so much, they kept him.
Wow, that's so great.
I'm so glad for all of you.
It's absolutely, uh, beyond our wildest dream, um, job. So, uh, I would just love it if I saw that kind of program here in Renton.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thanks for sharing.
Counsel, some of you might recall, we've had supportive employment, uh, employees, uh, working for us in the past, so it's been a great experience.
Yeah. Good. Okay, I did notice a couple other.
Mr. Mayor, or you go on. I wanna address the previous speakers. I've been sitting here kinda stewing. I really take exception to my colleagues being questioned, uh, on why they've been reelected and why they're sitting here. The two of you are sitting here because you're respected by the members of the community and because you're effective at your jobs. And you, year after year, give up your time, time away from your family, time away from other things, and you're reelected and you put yourself out there. I think that the members of our community who know the two of you know that and appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you, Mr. Prince.
Thank you, Ed.
Yeah. Very, very kind of you. Um, please, um, state your, your name and city of residence for the record.
Is there, okay, can you hear me? Okay. I just wanna make sure I could read that. Okay. Uh, my name, Paula Revere, and the reason I'm here is not like any other reason you've ever heard here. Um, 2007.
Excuse me, can you state your city of residence?
Oh, I'm sorry, Edmonton. In 2007, um, I became aware of a monstrous cartel. Became a victim of the monstrous cartel. And basically, they're basically descendants of the same people who George Washington fought against, the Divine Riders. And don't think that after the revolution, everything was dandy. Central bankers went after us in 1812 and then we had the Civil War and all the empire's money kept pouring in and we had the Confederacy. Things continued and what we don't remember is that 148 years ago, Lincoln was murdered. And he was murdered with the help of the empire. And one of the things that people don't realize, that I had to look back in history and figure out what was happening in my life, is that the Normans conquered England in 1066 and then the Rothschilds conquered the Bank of England in the early 1700s. And what happened was they picked up the Rockefellers to do their bidding in the United States. And the reason we never hear about it anymore is because in the 50s, Rockefeller fellers figured out their coup wasn't working and they had to blend, uh, and put their people into the Democratic and Republican Party. But here's the key thing, all of us, or most of us, are descendants from somebody. So ask yourself, where did all the conquerors go? Where did the monsters go? Where, where did all the beheaders go? Where did all the killers go? They didn't go away, they didn't get killed by the meek, they went underground. And so they're wearing suits and the tools they're using are money, medicine, um, they, they stole all the technology from Tesla.
I, I was, I was gonna say, I can tell this is important to you.
It is very important.
But can I ask, is there a city issue, something that the council could?
Well, I was actually gonna ask you, uh, is the mayor out of town?
Yeah, uh, he is, yeah, so I'm filling in for him.
Okay, and it's funny, you kinda look like him. You smile like him, it's amazing. I was like, what happened?
I think that's good.
Okay, it is good, he's, he seems like a nice gentleman.
I don't know, I think you have a little more hair.
So here's, here's the question. I know this sounds odd. Uh, it's actually not even a question. Um, I've had all the police help you could ever want.
Okay.
And they've all been, the ones that I have been able to connect with and I could see the effort have been wonderful. The problem is the rules that were set up, were set up so that I can't have any contact with them. And the problem is all of this evidence that I have, and I, I just gave you a quickie historical perspective. Basically what's happened is that, um, we used to be citizens with freedom and George Washington called everyone a citizen soldier. And the perpetrators had this idea, we'll ramp up over time, after they killed Lincoln, to, uh, basically conquer us with crime, and you could see that's been going on. And they cau- caused it in all different ways and there's a whole bunch of things that no one's aware of. And the reason you should know about it is that it actually stems back to the IG Farben Companies of Nazi Germany that got folded into the Rockefeller Foundation on May 15, 1911, under the Antitrust Act. Why is that important to you? Because state, the state of Washington has the strongest constitution. And the, um, state is under siege, just like all the other five-star states that gave women the right to vote 10 years sooner. Um, all of the evidence I have and the fact that no one's seen it is the reason President Obama's being blackmailed and it's the reason that 60 Republicans, and this isn't a, this isn't an offense against people who happen to be Republican or Democrat because I've been on both sides and I know that we're affected by, our beliefs are affected by what we're told. And if everyone knew the truth, we would just be Americans. And so what happened was, um, all of this blackmail, all of those massive killings, I could show on a calendar when my police help was high. Police help meaning pick me up with a witness and my evidence. Um, and so they're using a program called MK Ultra, they use mental health, it's very complicated, I have all the evidence of it. And the problem is, the corporation or the concept of employment never existed then because we were citizen soldiers fighting tyranny. And what's happened is everyone's become an employee with a job. And the problem is that's slavery and it makes your boss have more power than your mayor or your governor or your state or your spouse. And there's something wrong with that. And the reason is, it's a Trojan horse. Now, that makes everybody scared because they made sure you all have 401Ks and this much social security. And the problem is, it should be the other way around.
I'm gonna need you to wrap up now.
Okay. Is there any way? I know that he's out of town and it's better to have an executive and a counsel, but is there any way you could look at my evidence? It would, I have like seven exhibits, take about an hour, hour, you know, I could probably squeeze it into an hour and 15 minutes. And it has to do with all the crashes that we've experienced, all the crimes we've experienced.
Our city.
All the medical harm, it's all medical harm, do not go.
You're a resident of Edmunds?
Yeah, but the problem is, I'm not in the city and the problem is, they've infiltrated everybody. See, let me just give you a quick summary. In 2007?
Mayor, Ms. Korman?
Yep.
I, I think your five minutes are up and it has nothing to do with the city of Renton.
It has everything to do, it's why the whole state of Washington got crushed financially and I have all the evidence of that. They're lying.
Okay.
The Bank of America?
I think I will have to wrap this up.
Okay.
But thank you very much.
It does affect you. And the Bank of America and Chase, they did the coup on WAMU.
Okay, um, thank you.
And I have the evidence.
Okay, I think with that, we're ready to move on to the consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Sir, I'm so sorry, Renton is independent republic, like for example, Sam.
Sorry, you're, you're out of order. I'm gonna have to ask you to sit down.
I don't know your rules.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, Gary Williams and I live in Renton here. I take homage with what these gentlemen say about the speakers coming up here. I wish he could have been here when Mayor Coca Wheeler was here and we had the redevelopment of the Highlands. When we had not only the consul chambers filled, we had two other rooms besides. We had the longest consul meeting in the history of the consul. Every person that came here that wanted to speak was given time to speak and treated fairly and everything else. The Cedar River Library, when the people were unhappy with that, we came up and we said what we have to say. The reason they don't show up is that they're happy with the way things are going. The same reason that you guys are sitting, excuse me, I don't mean to be rude, but I say you guys, when your consul members are sitting at your chairs is because we like the job you do.
Thanks.
So we elect you, then we keep you there. However long we choose to keep you there is up to us. If they don't like how long you're sitting on there, become a member of our community and try to take your place or get somebody else to take the place or whatever. But why do you come to our community and tell us how to run it? Is you're so perfect that you can come in here and tell us how to run ours? Back off and leave us alone. We're happy with the way it's going and when we're not, we'll come and let you know about it.
Thank you very much. And yes, we, I appreciate that very much. You're absolutely right, we really do try and keep this an open democracy and let people speak. So thank you. Get one more, is it? Okay, Paul. Thank you, yep. Good evening.
My name's Paul Watt and I live in Renton. Reagan Dunn was here and he spoke. We weren't allowed to ask questions. I was challenged by one of our speakers here with signs, uh, to ask him certain questions. So, I caught him out in hallway and he's very pleasant, we talked. These two people have been to the King County Council. Reagan Dunn has allowed them several times, 15 minutes to speak before the council. Now, if this is not true, I expect them to challenge me on it. I'm only repeating what I've heard from Reagan Dunn. So far, I will believe him unless I find out that he's lying. If that's so, then I need to know. But as far as the people here in Renton, everybody I've ever known that wants to speak, myself included, and I'm not a public speaker by any means, have never been held back from saying what I believe. And I thank the council for allowing that and I hope that we will always be able to have our five minutes. Now, there are a lot of people who are sitting out there watching all this on TV and they are interested in what's going on in the city council. They just are not down here fighting the traffic like some of us do. Anyway, thank you for your time.
I appreciate your comments very much. Thank you also. And, and it's interesting about, uh, what Reagan Dunn passed along.
Consent agenda.
Okay, yes, okay. So, Don's reminding me, the council president pro temp's reminding me, he's trying to move to the consent agenda. And he's dying to talk about his four items on the consent agenda. So, Don?
Does anyone wanna take anything off the consent agenda? Seeing none, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's, uh, been moved by Don Person, seconded by Terry Breyer, that we approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Consent agenda is approved. Okay, and then next, we'll move on to unfinished business. Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Breyer?
Uh, yes, the Finance Committee has several reports.
Okay, Finance Committee, committee report. Approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves for payment on October 21st, 2013. Vouchers 324679 through 325007, two wire transfers and one payroll run with benefit withholding payments totaling 7,365,752.86 and payroll vouchers including 720 direct deposits and 53 payroll checks totaling 1,571,093.89. This is signed by the committee chair and, uh, member.
Uh, Mr. Mayor or President, uh, what would, what would you prefer?
Um, President, yeah.
President, okay.
Mr. President, that'll work.
Okay. Um, I would like to make a motion that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Person, that council concur with the committee report. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
And next is Finance Committee report Cedar River Trail renovation. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve work order number three with the Burschauer Phillips Construction Company in the amount of 107,677.58 for demolition and replacement of the upper Cedar River Trail located between Williams Avenue and the Renton Senior Activity Center. The committee also recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to transfer 72,000 from the Regis Park Athletic Field Expansion Project to the Pathway Walks, Patios and Boardwalks Project for a total project budget of 120,979.60, including contingencies to complete the trail work. Any unexpended funds will be returned to the original project fund upon project completion. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the work order agreement. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer?
I move that the, uh, council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
Been moved by council member Breyer, seconded by council member Person, that the committee report be approved. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The report is approved.
Okay, next is the Parks Major Maintenance Budget Adjustment for the Cedar River Trail Trestle Bridge Structural Review. The, the Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adjust the budget and transfer 5,000 from the Coulon Park Structural Repair Shoreline Erosion Fund to the Parks Major Maintenance Structur- Structural Reviews and Repairs Fund for a total project budget of 18,266, including contingencies to complete the structural review for the Cedar River Trail Trestle Bridge. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Ms. Breyer?
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Person, that council concur with the committee report. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Okay, and the last Finance Committee report, lease for Suite 400 at the 200 mil building. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence with the staff recommendation to approve a lease with Kurt Titeman, an individual during business as first rate mortgage for Suite 400 at the 200 mil building. The lease will provide the city with an average of 4,213.33 of revenue monthly over its three year term. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the lease agreement. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
And that's the last one, Mr. Mayor. I move that Fin- the council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Person, council concur with the committee report. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. A very impressive amount of work, Breyer, thank you. Okay, um, next up is, uh, Mr. Prince.
Uh, yes, there's a Utilities Committee report.
Utilities Committee, 2013 Water Use Efficiency Goal Setting. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt the city's 2013 Water Use Efficiency Goal in compliance with the municipal water law. The proposed city's 2013 Water Use Efficiency Goal will be consistent with the regional water conservation being implemented through the Saving Water Partnership Coalition. The regional water use efficiency goal is, reduce per capita water use from current levels so that total average annual retail water use of members of the Saving Water Partnership is less than 105 million gallons per day from 2013 through 2018 despite forecasted population growth. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
And Mr. Prince?
I move that the council, um, uh, concurs with the committee report.
Second. Been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Taylor, that council concur with the committee report. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
That's the last one.
All right, uh, so Mr. Person, anything?
Yes, I have a Public Safety Committee report.
Hey, Public Safety Committee, ordinance amending definitions in Renton Municipal Code 1-3-3. The Public Safety Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to improve an ordinance amending Renton Municipal Code 1-3-3 to more effectively address nuisance violations in multifamily and commercial structures. The committee further recommends that the ordinance regarding this matter be presented for first reading. This is signed by the committee chair and members.[1667.54]
Uh, Mr. Herman?
Yeah, Ms. Person.
This is just some wording changes. We feel that the ordinance would do the job now, but somebody has questioned whether it covers, uh, the parking lots outside of some of our establishments, and this will clarify that and make it a lot better for the police officers to enforce those complaints when they get them. With that, I move the council, uh, concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
I mean Finance.
Public Safety.
I said on the Public Sa- I, I've been on the Finance Committee for so long that I keep.
Well, maybe next year it can be your committee.
That's okay, it'll be yours.
That's right. Um, yeah, been moved by Mr. Person, seconded, um, by Ms. Breyer, that council concur with the Public Safety Committee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Very good, thank you, Ms. Person. Uh, Ms. Palmer, any old business?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, um, all right, with that, we'll move along to resolutions and ordinances.
Okay. We have one resolution, uh, it's regarding the South King County Training Consortium Associate Agency Agreement. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an interlocal agreement with Kent Fire Department Regional Fire Authority entitled South King County Training Consortium Interlocal Agreement, Associate Agency Agreement.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Person?
I move the resolution to be adopted as read.
Second.
Uh, moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Ms. Breyer, that the resolution be adopted as read. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted.
Okay, moving on, we have one ordinance for first reading. This ordinance regarding the, uh, amending the nuisance definitions. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending section one dash three dash three of chapter three nuisances of title one administrative of the, uh, city code criminalizing nuisance and chronic nuisance conduct in residential locations and in or around commercial, retail and entertainment businesses by amending the definition of calls for service, chronic nuisance premises and premises.
Mr. Corman?
Ms. Person?
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Person, seconded by Ms. Breyer, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay, this ordinance is moved to second and final reading. And that looks like solid resolutions and ordinances. Okay, we'll move along to new business. Uh, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, um, the, uh, Community Services Committee meetings that would normally take place on October the twenty-eighth will be canceled. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Breyer?
Uh, yes, I don't have any, um, new business to announce.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Prince?
Uh, the Utilities Committee, uh, that would be scheduled on October twenty-eighth is canceled.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, Mr. Person?
Oh, do missus.
Um, and I wonder, maybe you could announce the Committee of the Hall for me if you.
Oh, that's right, I, I, I'm taking your place there. Uh, yes, next Monday, October twenty-eighth, at five-thirty PM, uh, in the council chambers, the Committee of the Hall meet, two topics, uh, supportive employment for workers with